Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the MC Ernie Gallery at the WHQR Studios in downtown Wilmington. I'm John Evans of WECT News on behalf of our media partners from WHQR and Port City Daily. Proud to welcome you to a series of candidate forums we are having this evening from candidates running for office in the city of Wilmington. First, this evening, we have the seven candidates still campaigning for three seats in Wilmington City Council. If you remember, Mr. Guerrero, Sean Guerrero, had to suspend his campaign for work and personal reasons. His name will be on the ballot, but he is no longer campaigning. So we have the remaining seven candidates here. We are going to be asking questions of these candidates along with myself. We have reporters from our three media organizations. We have Kelly Canoyer from WHQR Public Media. We have Brenna Flanagan from Port City Daily, and we have Delaney Tarpley from WECT News. They, along with myself, will be asking questions of the candidates and candidates. We have a couple of rounds of questioning for you this evening. The first four questions, one from each of us, will be more of an umbrella kind of a question that we want all of you to answer. Those have been developed by the reporters themselves. And then the second round will be questions that have come in from our viewers, our readers, our listeners, specific to you, things that you have campaigned on, things that you have posted, things you have said about the issues and how you want to tackle them. So we will have two questions for each of you, specific to your campaigns and your issues. You'll also have a chance at the end for a closing statement. The very first question we are going to be given from Kelly Canoyer. For the answers this evening, you'll have 60 seconds for this first one. We're giving you 90 because we want you to have the opportunity to introduce yourself a little bit to the audience here in the gallery and also those who are listening tonight and watching on the live stream. So first, my fellow reporter this evening, Kelly Canoyer from WHQR.
Thank you all for being here. You'll have 90 seconds for this question, and we are going to start with Clifford Barnett. We have asked this question in every forum for the past five years, and we'll continue needing to ask it in some formulation for the foreseeable future. Wilmington has become unaffordable for many of its residents, to the point where some who were born and raised here are leaving the community to find affordability elsewhere. What will you, as a member of council, do about affordability in this city?
Okay, thank you. Excellent question. Good evening. As relates to affordability here in the city, one of the first things that we would consider doing, and we are doing, is getting more jobs here.
Can you pull the mic a bit closer?
I can, thank you.
Thank you.
Testing, one, two, five.
Perfect.
I think it's on. Okay, as it relates to affordability and people leaving the city, we are already very concerned about that. Here's some of the things that we've already done. For example, one of the things that we've done is we invite businesses, we partner with the chamber, we partner with minority businesses, we partner with small businesses, because what keeps people in cities is jobs, having jobs. And one good example would be Wawa. Wawa chose to come to Wilmington. You know, we didn't seek them, they chose to come, they're going to bring over 400 jobs. But not only are we talking about like big businesses like that, but also small business. Seventy-five percent of the businesses in Wilmington are small businesses. What will keep folks here is, of course, is having good jobs and then also having the ability to work with builders and work with realtors to build affordable housing, build houses like the Starway project that we've done, things like that. So I think those are some of the things that I will continue to do to help keep people here in Wilmington. Lastly, we also want to make sure people understand Wilmington is a safe place, public safety. We want to make sure that our police and our firemen get everything that they need. It's a beautiful place. We still look at our tree canopy and make sure that we have enough green space. We want to make Wilmington a safe place. Lastly, are you telling me time?
Is that time? That's time.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Are we going to get any warning?
He's got to do a better job with that, too, you know.
I think we might need a sign.
I'll get a sign.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Next, the same question to Chakima Clinton Quintana. What will you, as a member of council, do about affordability in this city?
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you all for attending tonight. What I would do as a city council member regarding affordable housing, sorry, let me get right up on it. What I would do as far as affordable housing is to also work in a collaborative of ensuring that, my idea is if we are building apartments and mixed-use properties that we ask for in the 10, we are normally getting 10% with apartment complexes, that we ask developers to give us 20% towards affordable housing. And so the example of that is if we're building a 345-unit apartment complex, we can ask for, that's only 34 units, but why not ask for 20% towards the affordable housing? That would help put a huge dent in our affordable housing crisis. We also have a tiny home community, which I love, and I think that we could also duplicate that in some areas because it doesn't take a whole lot of land, it's smaller homes, and we can, you know, definitely also help with our affordable housing issue as well. As far as the dilapidated homes in our community, I think that we should work, continue to work with Worms and other nonprofit organizations to help get those repaired so that we can keep air property in our communities and not being torn down and creating gentrification. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Collier to you next. What will you, as a member of council, do about affordability in this city?
Well, thank you. I'm Richard Collier, running for Wilmington City Council. I know that's a surprise, but that's what, that's what we're here for. Wilmington is such a great place. I've been here for 30 years. My wife and I moved here in 97, and we've had two, two kids, they're both now grown. I have two grandsons, and I want them to live in the same life that I've learned here over my last 30 years, how beautiful this place is. So our problems, you know, they are, they are probably many, but the biggest ones, affordability, the crime prevention, our infrastructure's aging, all of those things are issues and problems, but the question at hand is the affordability side. So I think it's going to take public and private partnerships. There's been many examples of that. The Good Shepherd House, it's now going, or the Good Shepherd's Apartments that are going up over where the old fire station was on Carolina Beach Road, that is now affordable housing. It's going up, it's, they're very nice. The city, I think, in essence donated the land, so it made it where they could go in and build, I think, 50 to 60 apartments that would help some of the homeless population, but also helps in affordability. The other things in jobs and schools, we need to continue working with UNCW, Cape Fear Community College, the trades, any trade school in the near area, because we want our kids educated. We want them to be educated to go out and get jobs and then take jobs that are here in Wilmington. We want to make sure they stay here in Wilmington. Both of my children are here in Wilmington, one of them I'm having to drag to stay, but they are both here in Wilmington, so thank you.
Same question to you, J.C. Lyle. What will you, as a member of city council, do about affordability in Wilmington?
Thanks for the great question. The question doesn't specifically say housing, but I think like with a lot of my fellow candidates, we're very focused on housing affordability. And my background is in housing affordability, both on the volunteer front and on the professional level. I've been here since 1996, volunteered with a lot of groups that serve basic needs, but housing, I fell in love with because it is very critical to every other social issue and every other part of a person's life. I have a lot of hands-on experience from serving as Worms Executive Director. We served over 2,000 families in about 15 years there, gave them repairs at no charge so they could hold on to their asset, hold on to their home. I serve on the North Carolina Housing Trust Fund Board, so I'm helping allocate millions of dollars every year of public money, and get this, it leverages private money so we can do more together. And I think that's really powerful. We need a housing trust fund here in Wilmington, and I would love to bring it here, and I understand the technical aspects and the benefits it can bring. I'd also like to use it to land bank, some land that is for sale in traditionally black neighborhoods so we can, we can preserve the history and for future generations. And on the Planning Commission, we walked away with a new land development code that both increased affordable housing incentives and protected the environment better. So don't tell me it can't be done together. Thanks.
Same question to you, Kelly Roberts. What will you, as a member of council, do about affordability in this city?
Right, so I think the question initially is affordability in the city. I think somehow we've started talking about affordable housing, which are two different things. I think the terminology is a little bit misleading. We have built 321 units of affordable housing. That's the government stipending people to be able to live in the houses. That does not bring down the overall real estate value. I want to be very clear of that. We live in a beautiful coastal community. It's difficult to live here. Everyone's moving here. I moved here five years ago. The only way that we can actually solve this problem is to start building on the outside. We need to utilize the, utilize the interstate that we have, Interstate I-40, I-140. There's a lot of green spaces that we can save and quit building on every piece of vegetation within the city limits. As we continue to do that, we're getting worse and worse traffic, and, and I think what we really need to focus on as well is the job growth. As new businesses come into this area, we need to be sure that we're hiring the people that are local. New businesses come in and they hire 50% people from outside the city limits. We need to make sure they don't do that.
Can I ask how you would make sure that happened as a member of city council?
Yeah, you can stipend these businesses to hire local.
Okay. The same question to you, Cassidy Santa Guida. What will you, as a member of council, do about affordability in the city?
So when I think about affordability in the city and the conversations that I've had with voters over the last couple of years, there's really two ways to think about it. One, how much do I need to spend to be able to live here? And two, how much do I earn to be able to spend the money that it takes to live here? So on the cost of living side, one of the things that I'm really interested in pursuing is establishing a local housing trust fund. This is an opportunity for us to take the money that the city of Wilmington has already set aside for affordable housing, combine that with other organizations like the Endowment that are interested in building more affordable housing in the, in the city. That way, we can incentivize the types of developments that we would like to see in the city, and we can help people on the path to homeownership. Housing trust funds have worked in other cities in North Carolina, and I think it's time for us to have one here. On the earnings side, I, I've seen a lot of economic growth come into Wilmington, and I think it's important that we make sure that the people who live here, all of us who live here, benefit from that growth. One of the things that I'm really interested in is workforce development programs. When I was at the University of Texas, I managed a workforce development program for five years where I helped hundreds of people begin a new career in software engineering, and I did it in a cost-neutral way. So I understand how these programs work, I understand how they can be successful, and I understand how we can transform people's lives when we give them the skills and the talent to take on the roles that are coming to town. Thanks.
All right, question to you as well, Luke Waddell. What will you, as a member of council, do to impact affordability in the city?
Yeah, first, I just want to thank our media consortium for, for having us here this evening.
Can you hold it a bit closer? Pardon me.
It's not my time, Ben. I'm going to thank you again. I do want to thank the media consortium. We have, we have great local media who do a wonderful job covering local government and the ins and outs of what happens here every day, and I appreciate the work that y'all do and all of you for taking the time out of your evening to be here. My name's Luke Waddell. I've had the honor of serving as your city councilman over the last four years. It's been an honor of a lifetime, and that's why I'm running to do it for four more years. You won't see me on this ballot again, I guarantee you that. But affordability is directly tied to supply and demand. Make no bones about that. City of Wilmington is only 52 square miles, and I don't think that we need to build on every square inch of that, but that does make our affordability difficult because land prices are just astronomically high due to the, the size of the city. City of Wilmington has, however, invested heavily, your tax dollars, roughly $3 million a year into an affordable housing fund since 2021, leveraging those funds into Lytech programs that are 100% affordable housing, and then other, other programs that have heavy, heavy affordability metrics. We work as, as part of the gap financing or as part of the capital stack with a developer to, to produce these units, and it's been successful. I will say that a year, about a year and a half ago during budget discussions, I found out that that fund had almost $10 million in it, so the dollars were not getting out the door. I made a, kind of a big deal about that, and I said, if you guys want to keep this a million dollars, you're going to have to get it out the door. Since then, we've got it down to about two and a half in leverage to quite a few units.
That's time. Thank you. Just so you know, we are going to change up the order on you. I invite Brenna Flanagan up. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Hello, candidates. I'm Brenna Flanagan. I'm from Port City Daily. And so my next question for all of you is, what should the role of city council be in addressing homelessness? And what specific actions beyond what's already been done would you support to help curb its rise? And so the first person I'm going to direct this to is Kelly Roberts.
Thank you. If you follow my campaign at all, you know that I live downtown. Homeless problem has, has been right in my face. There's a guy that I spoke about when I started this campaign. I talked about the Power Breakfast. He lives right below my building. This was months ago, and guess who I saw today when I was on my way up here? Same guy, same clothes, hasn't been helped. So I think we need to really focus on these programs, not only from a perspective of finance, we need to make sure we're getting return on investment for these people because we care about these people. Is there an exit strategy for these programs? How long are they in there? Are they prioritizing veterans? So you've got privately funded, you've got state-funded, you've got locally funded as well. So we need someone kind of overlooking this canopy, kind of like a manager. We need to start running this like a business and make sure we're helping people, because that guy outside the door over there isn't getting help. I think we could do a better job of that.
Thank you. And now to you, Richard Collier. What should the role of the city council be in addressing homelessness?
Thank you. I think the role in homelessness should be to continue what the rest of our community has, the compassion side of all of us. We all have compassion for them, and any one of us could probably be homeless if your paycheck to paycheck very quickly. So we want to make sure we do have compassion. However, we also want to make sure that we have public safety involved in there. We can't have both. We need to make sure there is public safety, but we need to have more of the social workers involved. I think now they're looking at bringing more social workers on to go out with the police department, because we don't need the police department trying to manage the social work. That, that is not what they need to be doing. They need the public safety side. We also need the mental health professionals involved. We need to keep all of those involved. The Good Shepherd itself is a great, great organization, and they are doing wonderful things with the beds, with the families, and they have social workers on staff that are helping to transition these folks out into new homes. Thank you.
Thank you. And now to Luke Waddell. What should the role of city council be in addressing homelessness?
Yeah, this has been a topic of great conversation in our community over the last few months. A lot of discussion, both at the city council level and at the, and in the public level of what should be done. Some of that brought about because I authored a, a public camping ordinance, very similar to ones that cities across the nation have been adopting since June of 2024, when the Supreme Court of the United States said the municipalities are able to do that. And basically, the, the thought process there was we have a compassionate community, a really compassionate community, and that's a good thing. We have 27, maybe 28 service providers just in the city of Wilmington alone, a smattering outside of that. But I think we needed to balance compassion with accountability, and that's exactly what the public camping ordinance set out to do. And over a course of a couple of months, over a course of a lot of discussion, disagreement, collaboration, compromise, we were able to, just last night, get a bipartisan public camping ordinance across the finish line, four to three. And ultimately, I think that's going to move the needle in a big way while also bringing in some of the, the social workers into our, our police department. That's been referenced before.
Thank you. And now to Clifford Barnett. What should the role of city council be in addressing homelessness?
That's a great question. The role of the city council addressing homelessness is, of course, as we take care of all of our citizens. And those that are homeless, of course, are most vulnerable ones. I think the role in city council is number one, to make sure that we listen, make sure that we hear what the experts are saying. As Councilman Waddell mentioned, there are 27 groups in the city who actually are working with the homeless. We need to make sure that we get their knowledge and make sure that we use them as partners to help those persons who are less fortunate than we are. The other thing I think that we need to do, something that I've been doing as a pastor, we've been working with the homeless. We work with them in, in shelters. We work with them as, in fact, we're one of the churches that are planning to do the parking lot where people can bring their cars, family, because those folks that are in their cars are the ones that are closest to getting back on their in their cars are the ones that are closest to getting back on their feet. The last thing I want us to make sure that we do is that with this ordinance that was passed on yesterday, we want to make sure that we're not criminalizing those who are less fortunate. We want to make sure that as we send out social workers and those agencies that will be able to help these individuals, we want to make sure that we're giving them the best that we have to offer. Lastly...
I think your time's up.
I don't think he likes me. I really don't. I really don't. Now, I'm just going to say, okay.
Thank you. And now to, and now to Cassidy Santa Guida. Same question. What should the role of city council be in addressing homelessness?
That's a great question, certainly top of mind for a lot of folks in the city. I think the first step is really how I would tackle any issue that we're facing in the city. Really understand the problem, meet with the experts and the service providers to understand what are the gaps in the services that they're able to provide, where, what are the shortfalls that they're experiencing? One of the things that I've, I've done myself to understand the, the problem is I've volunteered at the Good Shepherd Center, and I would encourage anybody to volunteer for dinner service at Good Shepherd. And you learn a lot about the experiences that people have when they're experiencing homelessness. And I think that really helps me understand that to tackle this issue, we've really got to expand the number of emergency shelter beds that we have in the city so that we can help folks have a safe place to land when they're experiencing some of the worst times of their lives. And after that, we also need to make sure that we have enough permanent supportive housing to offer to folks so that they have a path back to safe and stable, long-term housing. Provide wraparound services to help with job assistance and continue to help them back on that path. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you. And now to J.C. Lyle, same question. What should the role of city council be in addressing homelessness?
Thank you. The role of city council in addressing homelessness, they've made some good strides towards supporting the organizations that are focused on chronic homelessness. One of my areas that I'm really laser focused on is that number of new unhoused. Every year, there's between 70% and 80% of the folks counted as unhoused are experiencing homelessness for the first time. They tend to stay about three months, and then they are able to get back on their feet. But preventing them from getting into the system at all is the most efficient way to address our homelessness issue. When I was at Warm, that's what we were doing, repairing homes so that folks could stay in their homes as long as they would like. So I'm going to be laser focused on prevention. And like, we need to stop the bleeding first, stop people from getting into the system. So that's where my focus is going to be.
Thank you. And lastly, to Chakima Clinton Quintana, sorry.
It's fairly long. I did it.
What should the role of city council be in addressing homelessness?
Thank you. I think the role of city council in addressing homelessness is that they should be a leader, an advocate, and a collaborative partner with everyone here in the city. It is not just city council's job, but it is everyone's job to address homelessness. We have over 2,000 nonprofit organizations here in our city, and there are people here who are already doing the work. But if we prioritize those companies, those nonprofits who are doing the work, I think that we can definitely address our issue. Our issue is not as large as other cities such as California or Charlotte. We don't have a tent city. However, our homeless problem is not just in downtown Wilmington, it is across our city. If you're riding on Independence and you look across from the mall, there is a camp there. It is moved often, but it exists. And I think that if we all get together and do that and to help out our homeless population, we can... Thanks, Ben. ...resolve the issue.
Thank you.
He doesn't like me either. We all love Ben. We really do all love Ben. Yeah, it's got to be the side of the table.
Hi, my name is Delaney, and I'm a reporter with WECT News. Thank you so much for being here tonight, and thank you guys so much for being here tonight. So my question for you is, the character of Wilmington is changing as more houses and apartments are built on existing land. What should be the balance between green space and development, and how can city council play a role in determining that? And we're going to start with Richard Collier.
Thank you very much, Delaney. The character of Wilmington, Wilmington, it's a feel. We all know what the feel is, and to each person, it's slightly different. To some, it is going to the beach; to some, it is coming downtown. But everybody has a feel for Wilmington. That's why you moved here. That's why most all of us moved here. The ones that grew up here, I think it's just, it's just wonderful. But what do we need to do? We've got to manage growth. We know it's coming. We know it's, it's actually, it's already here. So are we going to manage the growth, or are we going to let it manage us? And that's, as a city councilman, that's the thing that we need to do. We need to manage the growth, look ahead, make sure we're preparing for what's coming down the road, making sure that roadway infrastructure is added prior to apartments or other facilities being built. Make sure that we have the water and the sewer. We met with CFPUA this week and discussed with them their improvements that they have ongoing, but still, we need to keep those things moving ahead. We also need to make sure our stormwater improvements are, are kept to date, because if not, the flooding is going to be a problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And to Cassidy Santa Guida, the same question. What should be the balance between green space and development, and how can city council play a role in determining that?
This is a great question, and one of, one of the things that I think we need to do in the city is, is be intentional about how we strike this balance, because we really do need to provide housing for the folks that live here. We, we've already discussed that. And, and I think we can do that while also conserving green space. I like to say, like, we can walk and chew gum at the same time here in the city of Wilmington. And what that looks like to me in terms of intention is focusing development in the places where we already have infrastructure, focusing on infill and adaptive reuse, and incentivizing development in places that we've already developed and maybe are underutilized or underused at all. And in terms of conserving green space, I think it's important that we understand that there is limited green space remaining in Wilmington, and it's going to take some intention and some planning and probably cross collaboration with other organizations and other local governments to make sure that we are conserving the spaces that we can so that we don't lose the quality of life that makes living here so wonderful for all of us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And to Kelly Roberts, the same question. What should be the balance between green space and development, and how can city council play a role in that?
Right. I sound like a broken record, but we need to start developing outwards. To Richard's point earlier, we have, we met with the Cape Fear Public Utility Authority. We have enough water pipes and sewage to stretch from here to Dallas, Texas. That's the infrastructure. Everybody always thinks about roads, but there's a whole part of infrastructure of a society that has to be done properly as well. So we talk about building density. I asked him, how far are we away from being able to build more densely than downtown from a, from a perspective of you, of you with the pipes? He said 15 years. We're not even close to it. So we need to stop developing within the city limits, stop developing on every piece of vegetation that we have. You can plan ahead, you can plan for parks, you build around those parks, and that's the responsibility of the city council to help push that forward. We need less density within the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And to Luke Waddell, same question. What should be the balance between green space and development, and how can city council play a role in determining that?
Great question, and I would say this is top of the mind for the residents and citizens that I talk to every day. This is probably one of the top issues. I authored an op-ed about six to eight months ago in the Business Journal entitled Seeing Greens: Case for Community Collaboration in Parks and Green Space. We, we don't have enough parks in the city, and if we're going to, if we're going to get them, my, the plan that I laid out was for the city of Wilmington, New Hanover County to strategically identify parcels of land that are undeveloped, and then work together to identify other sources of funding to acquire those properties, and then, and then ultimately activate them into some form of, you know, a passive park, an active park, ball fields, the things that we need to make a, a community, a community. It's something I'm actively working on along with other members of, of the city council and the mayor and the county commissioners. We just passed a resolution to that end last night and are actively working towards a, a special project. So that's my plan.
Okay, thank you. And then to Chakima Clinton Quintana, same question. What should be the balance between green space and development, and how can city council play a role in that?
So, you know, I think when we look at Wilmington, you know, we have some folks who visit here, and that's their fun, right? It's vacation, it's a tourist town. We want to keep it, you know, wonderful. And then we have some folks who are Wilmingtonans. They were born and raised here, and they love their city, and they don't want to see a whole lot of growth. I've seen the parks here, but also I'm all for green space. However, when we're talking about creating more green space, more parks, we don't have the capacity right now to even have those parks kept clean. We lost several employees, and I think someone mentioned, like, they can't clean the bathrooms even, you know, maybe twice or something like that, maybe in a month. That's, I don't think that's a park that I would want to take my kids to, and we can't afford to have someone clean them. The balance of doing so is hard. We have a lot of growth that needs to happen. Really, Ben?
That was not one minute. Sorry, guys. I love you, Ben. Sorry, we have to move on. So to Clifford Barnett, same question. What should be the balance between green space and development, and how can city council play a role in that?
The city council must play an important role in the balance of green space and growth. Now, when we think of green space and growth, one of the challenges we have is that you really got to be careful, because you can come up with a plan where you build all the parks and all the nice green spaces in one side of town, and then on another side of town, you want to do the density piece, okay? And so as a city councilman, one of the things that I'll be looking at everything that comes across my table is that I want to make sure that we're, we're giving green space in all of the whole city, not just in one certain town, one certain section of the city. Everybody's got the nice parks and all that kind of stuff, and then over here, we're building density. The other thing I think with the building of density, it's got to be strategic, and it's got to also fit within that land development code. We keep tweaking the land development code so that we can make sure that we do save trees and we do support the tree canopy. As a matter of fact, we've just given 500, and I hate Ben. I mean, just... I hope this is not being recorded, but I do hate it.
Or livestreamed. Yeah.
Oh, it's live. Oh, my God, it's live.
YouTube and your WECT News app. Okay, lastly, J.C. Lyle. What should be the balance between green space and development, and how can city council play a role in determining that?
Thanks for the great question. The public has been very clear that this is a big issue, and this is what I've been working on for years and years. I mentioned in the opening that when we did the, redid the land development code, there were incentives for housing, and there were also tree protection. So we could strengthen those at the same time. What does that look like? It looks like making storm, revising stormwater regulations so there's more incentive to, to redevelop those asphalt oceans out there and eliminating those requirements for minimum parking for non-residential areas. So we don't get those anymore. So that's kind of what that looks like on a smaller, on, on the, on the granular level, but we're not done with that. The city is only growing about, by about 2% a year. It's the surrounding counties that are growing by double digits. So we're dealing with a lot of growth that we're not getting tax revenue from, for example. So we, but we have a comprehensive plan that we base all of our decision-making on for development, and we're redoing that next year, and I want to be on city council to make sure all of our voices are heard. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Our last and final question is going to be about public safety. Mr. Waddell, I'd like to get your answer to the question first, sir. Background is, the city has had some trouble hiring and retaining police officers, and there's some debate about what style of policing WPD should follow. The question, now that there's a new police chief in place, what role should city council play in an effort to improve the police department?
Great question. Public safety is, is the cornerstone of my campaign. If we don't have a safe city, then none of the other things that we're talking about up here tonight matter. I was endorsed by the Police Benevolent Association because I've consistently supported the men and women at the Wilmington Police Department, advocating for better pay, transparency in their promotional structure and the tools that they need to do their job. 2023, crime in Wilmington rose by 21%, the highest year-over-year increase of any city in the state. That was due in large part to the reduction of force that we had at the police department. We're about 205 sworn officers, we're billeted for 289. There's a, there's a bright side there. We just hired a police chief, Ryan Zudema, who is absolute the man for the job. He's come in already fixing the culture of the city, already looking at salaries. I want us to be the leader in the region. Done playing patty cake with the other municipalities. I think we need to, to truly lead the region in how we pay our first responders, but not just pay. Also recruitment and retention bonuses are something I'm advocating for and working currently with the police chief.
All right, thank you, sir. J.C. Lyle. Now that there's a new police chief in place, what role should city council play to improve the police department?
First, before the city can do anything else, we're an employer first. The city is an employer before anything else gets done. And I've been an employer. I've been an employer of folks who are working for nonprofit salaries and working really hard to make the world a better place. We had really low attrition, and I'm happy to support the new police chief in efforts that are going to increase the retention tied into housing. They should be able to live here, maybe give the retention, retention bonuses as, in forms of help with down payment assistance, things like that. We got to get creative so the folks want to work for our police department, and they're not overburdened and overworked, and that they recommend that to their friends to come work here. So serving as a strong and faithful employer to the police department is where I'd start.
Thank you, ma'am. Clifford Barnett, now that there's a new police chief in place, what role should city council play to improve the police department?
The role that we will play to increase the police department is number one, we want to recognize that, first of all, 50% of our budget goes toward public safety, police, fire department. First things that we do is we try to make sure that they have everything that they need. Now, when we think about why the police stay, you got to realize that across our country, the last five years has been kind of tough on police officers. It's just been tough. It's a tough job. And what makes people stay on certain jobs is not just the salary, okay? It's not just the salary, but also some of the benefits, but also having a place where when you work, you enjoy coming to work. We did a national survey, a national search for the police chief that we got. He came out of Lynchburg, Virginia. He's a solid guy. I believe that he's going to be the one who's going to help us to keep our officers here. The other thing is that the benefits, we had some internal strife in our police.
Thank you, sir. Richard Collier, now that there's a new police chief in place, what role should city council play to improve the police department?
Yeah, I, I also am endorsed by the Police Benevolence Association, and I am certainly grateful for that. My, I have a brother that's a former highway patrolman, and he's now chief deputy in Pender County. So the police safety of the policeman and how they are taken care of is, is dear and near to my heart. I'm like Mr. Barnett. I don't think it's all about salary. I do think that is a part of it, and it plays a vital role in most folks. But they need things like culture. You need things like you're respected at your job, you're respected in your community. We need to make sure that when we're budgeting, we are budgeting the, the big 50%, but we need to make sure that we're budgeting for them and maybe the ones that have been there, the retention bonuses. We also need incentive bonuses if folks are coming to work for us. So salary gets to it, but that culture, I think that's what our new police chief's going to be able to do, is bring a culture and instill confidence back in the police going to be able to do is bring a culture and instill confidence back in the police department. For us to have public safety and like public safety, we have to feel safe. And to do that, we've got to have a good, strong police department. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kelly Roberts, now that there's a new police chief in place, what role should city council play to improve the police department, sir?
Yes, I think I was the first one to speak about this at the Power Breakfast a couple of months back. So we, we are budgeted for 280 officers. However, what most people don't realize is according to the standard, we're supposed to have 330 officers. So we're already under officers and then we can't retain them because we don't pay them enough. We've got 205. We're below the average market value for the whole state of North Carolina. We've got a city, Leland, that's a seven-minute drive that these guys can get paid 15,000 more dollars per year. You talk about a culture, have you ever worked at a restaurant where a server calls in and now you have to pick up their tables? These people are having to do 20 calls a day. Our citizens deserve better, the men and women in uniform deserve better. It's difficult to create a positive culture when you're doing twice the amount of work. You're working 12-hour shifts, you're forced to work overtime. It's, it's just really difficult. So I do think culture's important, but if you're getting worked that hard, the, the city suffers and then you suffer and eventually you're going to leave. So the first thing we got to do, and I don't know how it got here, 50% of the budget, how are we so below? Like who has been doing this? So we really need to fix that.
Thank you, sir.
Time's up, sorry, Ben.
Chakima Clinton Quintana, now that there's a new police chief in place, what role should city council play to improve the police department, ma'am?
The role that city council plays is that they recruited our wonderful new police chief and we're thankful for that, who also reports into our city manager, Ms. Betty Hawke. I think that the city council should ensure and make sure that, I'm sorry, Becky is empowered to empower our police chief to do a phenomenal job, which, for what he's hired for, such as building the culture, increasing pay and policing our neighborhoods and building those relationships with our neighborhoods as a whole, not just one side of town, but every neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Cassidy Santa Guida, now that there's a new police chief in place, what role should city council play to improve the police department?
Put simply, I think the role of city council is to take care of the people that take care of our city. And there are a number of ways that we can do that. As it's been mentioned, the police department is currently understaffed and so I think we need to help Chief Zudema focus on not just recruiting great new police officers, but retaining the folks that are already on the force, addressing our entry-level pay, but also making sure that we're not facing salary compression and pricing people who've been putting in good work for years into other markets. The other thing that I would say is in terms of departmental culture, I'm really excited that, with bringing Chief Zudema on, because I think he's done some things in, in other cities to really focus on a culture of a police department. And one of the greatest indicators of retention in any industry is the relationship that an employee has with their leadership team. And so I'm really excited about building a great culture in our police department here. And I'm also excited with Chief Zudema and the work that he's done to build relationships and trust with the communities that he's served. I think that's something that we also need to help with relationships with our community.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Candidates, that ends the umbrella questions. Now, each of our reporters will come up with questions that we have received from, again, our viewers, our readers, our listeners, specific to each one of you. You'll have 60 seconds to answer these questions. We'll go through the panel twice and then we'll do our closing statements. I'm going to bring Brenna Flanagan up from Port City Daily to ask the first question.
All right. My first question is for Chakima Clinton Quintana. You have described yourself as a champion for inclusive economic development. Can you explain how you define that and what actions you would support the Wilmington City Council taking to advance it?
Okay, say, state the question one more time.
Yeah. You've described yourself as a champion for inclusive economic development. Can you explain how you define that and what actions you would support the Wilmington City Council taking to advance it?
So part of my role, for those that don't know, is that I run our lead channel, which is an initiative powered by Live Vote Bank. It is designed to help people like yourselves or small businesses start, grow and thrive in their small businesses. I am a champion for doing that. I believe that small businesses are part of, or the backbone of the Wilmington area and surrounding areas. So we have people coming from all over. We've had over a thousand people come through our doors and I've made sure that I've connected those folks with resources to help them thrive. So that's why I consider myself an advocate for economic development and inclusive, my,
Inclusive Economic Development.
Inclusive Economic Development, sorry. But I also believe that if we do not, you know, help our small business owners or receive any type of incentives to help them, they are living and working here, but many are across the bridge and cannot afford to live in our city. No, you guys didn't get a little bell. I love it. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, this next question is for Kelly Roberts. You see that one of your biggest priorities is relieving traffic congestion in Wilmington and you've talked a little bit about implementing intelligent traffic systems. So can you explain what this is and how you believe it will help our traffic issues?
Yep, I like to say something new at every one of these and I think this is going to be something new that no one's talked about. So I worked on intelligent traffic systems in Dallas, Texas. What it is, is there's different types of intelligent traffic systems. In particular, what I'm talking about right now is called an adaptive traffic system. What it does is it sees the flow of traffic depending on the time of day in real time. Sometimes the traffic's bad at 2:00 PM. It's not always just at 4:00 PM or 5:00 PM. Sometimes there's a left turn that, that just gets stuck and the light isn't adaptive. So these are pretty things, these are things that normal cities have that have the budget for it that look at it. I haven't heard anyone talk about it, so I called the traffic engineering people and I spoke with a couple of engineers and had a meeting with them. I learned that we have 252 traffic signals in the city of Wilmington. And can you guys guess how many adaptive traffic signals we have? Zero, you got it. So that's the, that's going to be a top priority for me. We talk about congestion of traffic and kind of getting rid of people. We don't have to get rid of people. What we got to do is get smarter light systems than other cities have. And that's an outside perspective that I bring to the table. I can help with the traffic. Thank you.
This question is for J.C. Lyle and it's from a reader from Port City Daily who's also a native of Wilmington. They said, I would like to know what you will aggressively do to slow the growth in this city until the problem of infrastructure, affordable housing and homelessness is addressed.
Would you repeat that?
As a native of Wilmington, what will you do to aggressively slow the growth in this city until the problem of infrastructure, affordable housing and homelessness is addressed? They are a native of Wilmington, to be clear.
Gotcha. Yes, the natives of Wilmington, what a lucky group. I've been here, I've been here almost 30 years now and I've seen a lot of change, I've seen a lot of growth. The, when I moved here, there was military cutoff, Annie's Wood Road are both two-lane roads. So there've been, there's been a lot of infrastructure improvements over time. We've been having trouble keeping up since the pandemic that made it so much easier for people to work in a wonderful place like ours, I mean, live in a wonderful place like ours and work in other parts of the country. So that we've gotten behind in a lot of our infrastructure improvements, but we have a capital improvement plan. We need to make sure that is funded. I don't know that aggressively slowing growth is possible because it's America and people can continue to move here. The, the city council has made great decisions in the past and has made this an amazing place to live. And in my almost 30 years living here, it never occurred to me that I would be the last person that moved here. So we need to, but we do need to make room and, and grow ethically and responsibly. Thank you.
Okay, my next question is for Cassidy Santa Guida and from a reader in their own words, we focus a lot on what is not working. What have you seen in other cities our size that give you hope or serve as a bright spot and something we could implement here in Wilmington?
Well, this is a great question. It's so optimistic. I will say, one of the, one of the things that I've been really inspired by is the Housing Trust Fund that's been established in Charlotte. I know we are nowhere near the size of Charlotte, but when we look at the Cape Fear region and the impacts that affordability are having on the region, I think something like a Housing Trust Fund is really exciting. I think it's cool that there are so many great models out there that, that we can learn from and people who've been through this who can give us some great advice. I've also been really inspired by cities that are, you know, about our size, who are thinking about innovative ways to address traffic, how to bring public transportation to more people, how to think about building pedestrian and bikeways that really serve the needs of the community and understanding how people are already riding their bikes, where they're already walking and incentivizing those kinds of behaviors in the parts of the city that need it. And finally, I, I think I'm just really excited by cities that are, that are taking the steps to do things like offer free Wi-Fi access across the city. It helps folks who maybe don't have it at home have access to resources for jobs and, and education and things like that. Thank you.
This next question is for Richard Collier. In a news article, you described yourself as a problem solver with hands-on experience. You're open about the fact that you don't have any political experience, though. So how do you believe your experience working in civil engineering would help you as a member of city council?
Thank you very much. So I'm not a politician, I'm a civil engineer. I think like an engineer. Engineers think logically, they think linearly. For the last 18 years, I've worked on the county's planning board and the last almost 10 now with the city on the city planning commission. So doing that job, it is, that particular job is handling the codes, the ordinances, what's happening day-to-day with the city and it's some of the same things we're doing or will do on city council. As an engineer, though, what, how does my experience help me? It is because I've solved problems. I solve problems, I go and figure out how to make them. I know how to build systems, build systems that are going to last. I also know how to build roadways. I understand how to build stormwater management, stormwater treatment and management. I can bridge a lot of gaps with our internal city departments that may not be there today or with the N C D O T or with the M P O. Those are the things that my experience and my background and with my 30 years here in town, that's what I'm going to do to help on city council.
Thank you.
This question is for Luke Waddell. You've recently made substantial efforts around policing the unhoused. Have you ever spoken with a homeless person or provider downtown and what did you learn from that experience and how does it inform your policymaking?
That's a good question. Again, we have had a lot of discussion about this and, and it was called Luke Waddell's public camping ordinance. Fact of the matter is, city manager brought it forward, I, I championed it. But we ultimately, in a bipartisan manner, collaborated on, on a, on a, on a common sense ordinance that prioritizes public safety and also implements the compassion that our city has. I've certainly spoken to many homeless individuals, I've, I've talked with providers and I've been in office for four years, so we, we deal, we deal quite often with, with providers. And we've got a wonderful array, constellation of talented and equipped providers in our city that we support and the county supports to a great deal. And we should continue doing that, but we cannot lose sight of the accountability piece and pri, and continue to prioritize public safety.
Thank you.
Okay, my last question is for Clifford Barnett. In a 2021 Port City Daily questionnaire, you said you would support a housing bond. Do you still support that and do you plan to bring it forth for council consideration? And in your view, what would the bond fund?
Okay. Yes, I would, I would support a housing bond and the bond would support, one of the things I think that we must learn to do is partner, you know, partner with other agencies. And I think the bond would help us to help those individuals who perhaps can't get the housing that they need. Because as we mentioned, the, the, where we live right now, it's a seller's market, you know? And so perhaps with a bond, a housing bond, maybe it could help us with helping people keep the air properly and stuff. And I said that in '21, I didn't know anything in '21, okay? And I probably still don't know anything in '25. But, but that's, I think I would do it, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, this question is going to kick off our second round of questions. So the first one is going to Kelly Roberts. A quick scroll on your Facebook page and you can see that you've seemed to garner the support of a lot of downtown businesses. Which specific priority of yours do you believe has many of them hanging their, your signs in their windows?
Well, I don't think it's a specific, specific priority. I think it's these people, trust me. I think if, if you're in a business and you're hiring somebody, you can hire on personality, you can hire on, you know, if they're qualified or not. But I think if you hire someone with good intention, when capability meets intentions, anything can happen. So I think these people know that I'm doing this from the bottom of my heart. I've got bipartisan support from both Democrat and Republican. People are putting my names on their business window. These businesses, they saved up their whole lives for. I got a call from a reporter saying they've never seen that before, so they're going to do a special story about that for me. I like to think that maybe it has a little bit of part that I'm the only U.S. military veteran running, but honestly, it's because these people know me and they trust me and they know I'm going to do the right thing when I get in there.
Okay, thank you. This question is for Clifford Barnett. As an incumbent, can you talk about what you've accomplished during your time served?
Okay, thank you. Excellent question. As an incumbent, one of the first things I think I want people to understand is that as an incumbent, first of all, you can't do anything by yourself. One of the main things I think I like that I've accomplished is I've been able to work with every member on the council. Some of the things that I'm really proud of are the amount of money that we get for housing, the one cent that we put away for housing. I'm proud of the hiring of our new city manager. I'm proud of hiring the new police chief. I'm proud of the work that we do as relates to partnering with other agencies. I'm proud of the work that I do when people come to the table and they say, we want to build this. And, and the first question I ask is, how is it going to help with our affordability? So I'm proud of the things that we're doing, the partnerships that we're building. I'm proud of those. And I want to do this for Ben.
Thank you.
Okay, my next question is for Luke Waddell. You serve as city representative on the W M P O and are a member of its subcommittee currently discussing a tri-county transportation authority authorized to issue bonds to fund transportation projects, most notably the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge. What is your vision for how the authority would be governed and what projects would you like to see covered? Do you see it as a way to fund a robust public transportation system in the city?
This is an extremely exciting initiative that I'm, that I'm excited to be a part of. Ultimately, what this is, is would be a tri-county sales tax referendum, one-cent sales tax referendum as we have contemplated it currently. And those funds would be used to, to fund transportation projects in those three counties. How it would shake out is still, is still to be determined, but ultimately, it, it could, it could fund the replacement of the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge in cash, no toll. I've been anti-toll, very publicly so, and, and so this is something that I am heavily invested in. I want to see you get across the finish line, but it's not just the bridge. We also could fund large infrastructure projects in New Hanover County, in the city of Wilmington, in Brunswick County and Pender County. It's thinking from a regional approach in a way that we, I don't think we've ever done. It's a really exciting time to be in office and that's why I'm running again.
Thank you.
Okay, this question is for Cassidy Santa Guida. You ran for a seat on the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners last year. What did you learn from that campaign and why is it so important for you to try to become part of the local government, whether it's as a county commissioner or as a city council member?
That's a great question. I think one of the most important things that I learned is that the voters in the city of Wilmington and the issues that we face, it's very similar to the issues that the voters in the county face. We're the largest municipality in New Hanover County and we share a lot of the same issues. It is really important for me to run for local government because I'm raising my family here. I have a 10-year-old daughter and I think a lot about what her life is going to be like here in 20 years. I want her to be able to afford to live here. I want her to have great opportunities in her career here. I want her to enjoy raising a family here if that's something that she chooses to do. And I want her to be able to get around town without sitting in traffic for hours. So I'm very optimistic about the future that we can build in our city. And I think most importantly, one of the things that I would really love to do for the people in our city and, and the way that I think about raising my daughters, understand that we are all neighbors first, we are all Wilmingtonans first, and we need leaders who are ready and willing to serve every single one of us to make sure that Wilmington is a city that works for all of us. Thanks.
Thank you. This question is for Chakima Clinton Quintana. When it comes to housing policy, your platform includes a commitment to affordable and inclusive housing. Do you also support the development of market rate housing to accommodate our significant growth and if so, where?
So I can't tell you where. I'd have to go look. I don't think I've done enough research to tell you whether I would support market rate housing at this point in time. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My question is for Richard Collier. From a reader, high-density development is rapidly decimating the urban forest of Wilmington. A large majority of Wilmington citizens care about trees and want much stronger development regulations to force developers to focus on preserving more trees. How will you respond to that issue?
Thank you, thank you. It's, tree preservation is a huge part of what, what's going on today and what's needed. As, as was mentioned earlier, the land development code and the strides when we wrote it and put it into action in 2021, it did come up with the codes that handled tree preservation, how we would go about, if there is removal, then they have to pay, not a fine, they pay into a fund. And that fund then goes to pay to build more trees, put more trees out. I saw recently, and I think the city council just passed it maybe last night, the money was being transferred so that their trees could be built. There's 685 trees, I think, that are being built. Most folks just see trees come down, but they don't see the other side of it, is that the city is actually taking that money and using it. Now, the other thing that we need to do in tree canopy preservation is we want to, we want to save trees. We also want to cut down on stormwater management. So to do that, you've got to shrink the footprint, whether it's doing adaptive reuse, whether it's infill development and those kinds of things. But we want to save it and, and be able to reduce the tree canopy.
Thank you.
Okay, and then our last question of round two is for J.C. Lyle. With your background as the CEO of Warm N C, you've seen firsthand With your background as the CEO of Warm NC, you've seen firsthand the devastating impacts of hurricanes Matthew and Florence. Researchers with the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration are predicting an increase in active Atlantic hurricane seasons. Is there anything that you believe the city of Wilmington could be doing to better prepare for large weather events?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. We were very instrumental in pulling together disaster recovery coalitions in each county that we serve after Florence. And those coalitions are still active today. They're the touchpoint from the county governments and FEMA to the resources in the community and help really mobilize resources. That's uniting the folks who are working on it is really an important part. And also making sure that we're storm resilient from an earth perspective, that we're preserving trees, that we're taking the opportunity to get spaces that we can preserve for green space. So those are two big things that we can do for hurricane resilience and making our buildings and our homes, especially homes that folks have trouble affording repairs, like Warm was doing, and prepare those buildings for more severe weather. Because we're getting lucky, it's not over yet, but we've had a pretty quiet season so far, but that's not going to happen forever. So thanks for the question.
Thank you.
We're going to give each one of our candidates one minute for a closing statement. Since we went alphabetically for the first question, we're going to go reverse alphabetical for the closing statement, one minute. Candidate Luke Waddell. Mr. Waddell, you have one moment, sir.
Wilmington's home. I met my wife here. I started my business here. We've raised our family here. I have two sons, two-and-a-half-year-old Luke Junior and a five-month-old Sterling. So I've seemed a little tired up here. It's not that I'm bored with the questions, it's that I'm a little tired up here. But over the last four years, I've had the honor and the privilege to serve as your city councilman. Four years ago, I promised to deliver bold, principled leadership, leadership that was focused on the fundamentals, focused on public safety, focused on investing in our infrastructure, focused on fiscal responsibility. I've worked every single day to deliver on that promise. I've voted against unnecessary tax increases and pushed back on what I would consider wasteful spending. I've advocated for consistent infrastructure in our capital improvement program, and I've consistently supported the men and women of the Wilmington Police Department and the Wilmington Fire Department. Because I believe it's the right thing to do, because I believe in the future of Wilmington. We have such an incredible place to call home. It's got its challenges. We've talked about a lot of them here, but we have so much opportunity. I'm looking forward for four more years, asking for your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next for her closing statement, candidate Cassidy Santa-Guerta, one minute, ma'am.
Thank you. And thank you all for being here tonight and for folks watching on the live stream. I'm running for Wilmington City Council because I want to be part of making good things happen in our city. I've had an incredibly successful career. I feel very fortunate to have helped organizations grow and scale from startup to global enterprises. And I'm excited to take those experiences and my leadership to city council. I was joking with my mom the other day, who's watching, hi, Mom, that a lot of people get to their mid-40s and they buy a Porsche. And I got to my mid-40s and I decided that I was going to organize my life so that I could impact policy. This is what I'm going to do with my life, and I really hope that it's on Wilmington City Council. Thank you.
Next for his closing statement this evening, candidate Kelly Roberts. Mr. Roberts, one minute, sir.
Hi, thank you. First, let me say hi to everybody live streaming as well. I love Wilmington. This is a beautiful city. I've never seen anything like it. And I feel like as people move here, they're going to feel the same way. It's going to expand out, we're going to get more people, and you need somebody that has fresh perspectives. I'm not sure if most of you people know this, but we don't have districts for people running. A lot of other cities have districts for city council. We don't. And the idea behind that is because you can get the best candidate. Wouldn't you want a diverse group of people on the board? There's not a single technical person right now in city council. You guys need me. You need me for the intelligent traffic systems. You also need me because in 2021, North Carolina passed a law where you can't pay any ransomware. So if you think that we're not going to lose any servers at any point in time, we do. There's a cyber war going on in municipalities. 2025 in North Carolina has been the worst year for cyber attacks, and there's no one even looking at this stuff. There's no commission. I talked to the mayor about this the other day, about getting a commission implemented for cybersecurity, and I think it's a good idea, and I could lead that.
Thank you, sir. Next for her closing statement this evening, candidate J.C. Lyle. Ms. Lyle, one moment.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Thanks for, thanks to our hosts. I know event planning is a lot of work, and so I appreciate how much you've done to give us a venue to speak to the people. I've been training for nearly 30 years to be your next city council member, and it's been an honor to serve on the Wilmington Planning Commission and volunteer and run nonprofits here. We can't stop growth or even aggressively necessarily slow it, but we can mitigate its impacts. We can get those transportation bond projects from 2014 completed. That'll help. We can prepare our workers that are already living here for the jobs that are coming. Right now, we have two out of three jobs that are created are filled by people moving here. So there are a lot of little things that will add up. And I've been familiar with those little things, and I want to help you have a voice on city council and help you add those things up to mitigate some of the growing pains that we have. And you're going to have pains, those are the ones we want.
Thank you, ma'am. Next for his closing statement this evening, candidate Richard Collier. Mr. Collier, one minute, please, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all for being here. I appreciate all the media support and the public support as well. I'm Richard Collier, running for city council. Wilmington's my home. It has been my home. It's your home, and I want to protect that for you. I want to be on the council to help protect how Wilmington works. You know, my policies have been the whole time of infrastructure, making sure that we pick up the aging infrastructure, the police and safety. We need to make sure that we have public safety and we have respect for our police department and the remainder of our first responders. Also want to protect the environmental side of things, as we talked about, the tree canopy, the wetlands, and any of the other pieces that go on with, in the environmental realm of this. As an engineer, I've worked on all of those things. I've worked on the environment, I've worked on saving the trees, I've worked on building the right systems that work and that they last. And those are the things I want to keep doing, is building things that last. I know that my experience as an engineer will help, and I think we need an engineer on city council. So thank you all very much for being here, and I look forward to your vote in November.
Thank you, sir. Next for her closing statement, Chiquima Clinton Quintana. One moment, ma'am. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Hi, everyone, and thank you for coming. I appreciate everyone who's watching live. My name is Chiquima Clinton Quintana. I'm running for Wilmington City Council because I love Wilmington. I moved here six years ago. I'm not a politician, well, at least not yet. However, I do love the city of Wilmington and everything that it stands for. I know we have a tough history, but I'd like to change that. I'd love for Wilmington to become more inclusive, for companies and people to work together, and that's what I'm here for. When I got here, I jumped right in with the community. I'm a leader, I'm an advocate, and I'm a voice for the people. I'm asking for your vote. I want your trust. Please think of me when you go to the polls. Early voting starts October 16th. I want your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next for his closing statement this evening, candidate Clifford Barnett. Mr. Barnett, one minute, sir.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. I do also want to let you know that as a member of the city council, I've been serving for the last eight years. And my colleagues, two years ago, honored me to be elected as the mayor pro temp. That means that whenever Mayor Sappho steps out or something, I kind of take his place. Of course, he never steps out. But anyway...
He shows up.
But what I want you to understand, though, is that I'm a person of integrity. I've been pastoring for 46 years. I didn't just come here to do this. When a bishop gives you an assignment, or he gives you the keys to the church, he gives the appointment, but then only God sets up the assignments. And so my grandmother used to say, make sure that you do the things that have been assigned your hands to do. And part of working with this city, making the city a better place to live, is what has been my assignment, my task. And so I ask that you continue to support me as I continue to work for the Wilmington city.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, a round of applause for all of our candidates, please. It's, a lot of people complain, moan, gripe, whatever other adjectives you want to use. It takes guts to sign on the dotted and to run. So please, respect these ladies and gentlemen, get out and vote. As Ms. Clinton Quintana just said and stole my line, early does begin on October the 16th. Election Day is November the 4th. Give us a five-minute break. We'll change out, bring in our mayoral candidates in, and we'll continue our forums right after this.
And welcome back, everyone, to the MC Ernie Gallery here at WHQR. I'm John Evans of WECT News. On behalf of our partners in this consortium, WHQR Public Media and Port City Daily, welcome to the second forum of the evening, featuring the three candidates running for mayor in the city of Wilmington. We're going to give each one of the candidates time for an opening statement. We will have opening statements from each candidate. We will have a series of umbrella questions asked by the reporters from each one of the organizations that all of the candidates will answer. And then, similar to the city council forum, the reporters have culled questions sent in by listeners, viewers, and readers of our three media organizations specifically to each one of the candidates. And so we will have a couple of rounds of questions for each one of the candidates as well. They'll have a chance for a closing statement, as we will try to get out of here and let you get on with your lives as close to 8 o'clock as we can. I'm going to give each one of the candidates one minute for an opening statement. Again, ladies and gentlemen, we'll have the opportunity, please try not to do any applause. We'll give you opportunity. We don't want to break the candidates' train of thought or take any time away from each of them. We'll go alphabetically with our opening statement from each one of the candidates. That means one minute for an opening statement from candidate Jonathan Barfield. Mr. Barfield.
Well, good evening. My name is Jonathan Barfield, Jr. I had the pleasure of serving as one of your county commissioners here for 16 years. Following my father's footsteps, Jonathan Barfield, Sr., who got elected to the Board of Commissioners back in 1980 and served for 12 years. You know, public service is in my blood, it's in my family. Recognizing the fact that at 17, I decided to give myself to my country, and I joined the U.S. Navy and served a total of six years, both active duty and reserves. And then, 2008, I wanted to serve my community. That's when I ran for county commission. My wife, Laura, and I have been married for 37 years about a month ago, have four beautiful daughters, two great-sun-in-laws, and now I have two awesome grandsons who I'm just loving on every day. You know, I know that I've been on assignment since 2008, and my assignment is not over. You know, partnering with our community to make sure we have housing affordability is one of my number-one concerns. I've had three gubernatorial appointments in my 16 years, one by Governor Perdue on the Sheriff's Education Training Standards Commission, one by Governor Cooper on the Cape Fear Community Council of Trustees, and most recently, Governor Stein on the Real Estate Commission. I've also served on Governor Stein's transition teams, chairing the committee that interview candidates for Secretary and Deputy Secretary of Military Veteran Affairs, because I'm a military veteran. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next for his opening statement this evening, mayoral candidate Billy Craig. Mr. Craig, one minute, please, sir.
Good evening. Billy Craig, I'm running for mayor of City Wilmington. I'm born and raised here. I spent 30 years as a police officer, working this city. I have seen the worst of this city and I've seen the best of this city. I'm really running because, like Mr. Barfield said, service is always my big, one of my big callings. Many times, I've had to tell people really bad news. I've watched life begin and I watch it end. I want to run, I want to be the mayor of Wilmington, because we have a lot of things going on. We need a lot of help. Our citizens are basically not being told, the transparency is not here, and we need transparency. Is that before time?
Thank you, sir. Next for his opening statement, we will have mayoral candidate Bill Sappho. Mr. Sappho, 62nd, sir.
Thank you. My name is Bill Sappho. I have been your mayor for the last 19 years. We have built a tremendous community here, and the accolades speak for themselves. We've been recognized in every major publication in the country. A lot of you that may have re-planted here and come to this community, we're proud of what we've been able to do. When I ran in 2003, I wanted to revitalize downtown Wilmington, create a land use plan... When I ran in 2003, I wanted to revitalize downtown Wilmington, create a land use plan, and be a consensus builder. And I believe that I've demonstrated to this community over and over again that I've been able to do that and get things done. And I'm proud of what we have been able to do. We talked about a convention center, we got it done, we finished our River Walk, we put in parks, we put recreational facilities in this community. We worked with a lot of different folks over the years to accomplish a lot of the things that we have all talked about and I am proud of the things that we have done as our community and I stand on our laurels. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, candidates, we will have a round of umbrella questions asked by myself and fellow reporters Kelly Canoia of WHQR Public Media, Brenna Flanagan of Port City Daily, and Delaney Tarpley also of WECT News. Mr. Craig, I'm going to ask the first question and I'd like your response to it first if I can. Being the mayor is like being a city council member, but there's just a little bit more to that seat. What is that extra something you want to bring to the role of mayor and why are you the best man for the job? 60 seconds, sir.
True transparency. There's been a lot of occasions, especially with your police department, there was no transparency and it caused a lot of good people to leave. I want to show true transparency to the citizens and to the employees of the city of Wilmington. I retired from this city. I understand what they've had to go through. I understand what it is paycheck to paycheck.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sappho, what is that extra something that you want to bring to this role of mayor? Why are you the best man for the job, sir?
Well, when you're the mayor, you're everybody's neighbor. Whether you voted for me or not, I represent the entire community, Republicans, Democrats, Conservatives, Independents. My job is to get things done for this community, to work with the council, to build consensus amongst the council, to approve the decisions that we all make as a council, as well as work with our county commissioners, as well as work with our state representatives, as well as work with our folks in Washington. They all play a role, a significant role, in everything that we do here in Wilmington, North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barfield, what is that extra something that you want to bring to the role of mayor in Wilmington and why are you the man for the job?
You know, serving as chair of the county commission for four years, vice chair for three years, that's pretty much like the mayor in mayor pro temp, but in a greater capacity. Recognizing that I was on the most powerful governing body at the local level, the county commission, where I served all the citizens here with the city of Wilmington being our largest municipality. And recognizing the fact that, serving in that capacity, you are the face for your community. You are that conduit. One thing, as I mentioned before, serving on Governor Stein's transition team, being a county commissioner, I have that connective tissue between county government and state government, making sure that we can get what we need in our community. Being on Governor Stein's transition team gives me direct access to him and the chief of staff. So there's something that we need in our community, a phone call is all I gotta do. I've got a cell phone number, both him and the chief of staff on my phone, but also the county elected officials, the county commissioners, the staff there. Being a county commissioner for 16 years, I have that ability to bridge the gap and bring everyone together.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Next for the umbrella question, I'm going to bring up my colleague Kelly Canoia of WHQR.
Hi, folks. Thanks for sticking around for the mayor's forum. We have asked this question in every forum for the past five years and we'll continue needing to ask it in some formulation for the foreseeable future. Wilmington has become unaffordable for many of its residents to the point that some who were born and raised here are leaving the community to find affordability elsewhere. What will you, as a member of council, do about this? We'll start with you, Mr. Sappho.
Well, we have done something about it. We've set aside one cent of the property tax rate for affordable housing. In the last five years, we have spent $23 million to create over 1,000 units of affordable housing, 30% AMI, 60 and 80% AMI. It's important that government plays some role in subsidizing it. And although sometimes people have an issue with that, I also want to remind people, especially those that are in the real estate business, if we didn't have FHA/VA funding, we would probably not build 90% of the houses in this country. Government does play a very active role and this city has been playing an active role since I've been on the city council. And we've been doing it with money. We haven't been just talking about it, we have been funding it. Thank you.
The same question to you, Mr. Barfield. What will you do about the affordability crisis in Wilmington?
You know, I have one daughter that is still at home that I don't think will ever leave my house. She won't leave. She can't afford to leave. You know, as a county commissioner, I was really proud that we supported investing $50 million over five years in housing affordability, $3 million a year. The first product that was delivered was a strelet landing apartments off of Gordon Road and College I-40. This builder got low-income tax credits. There's one senior citizen that's living there with a one-bedroom, brand-new apartment, brand-new appliances, paying $3.35 a month. That's a real dividend, something you don't see in our community. Then we partnered with New Beginning Christian Church in Castle Hain where they built a senior housing community. It's going to take real dollars being invested, not just loans, but real dollars invested with developers that are getting these low-income tax credits to build these affordable units. But I really want people to own homes because when you own a house, that's where you build generational wealth. When you're paying rent, you're paying someone else's mortgage. I want you to have your own home so you can pass that down to your children, your grandchildren, and have that generational wealth for years to come.
Mr. Craig, what will you do about affordability in this city?
Will you repeat the whole question, though?
Wilmington has become unaffordable for many of its residents to the point that some who were born and raised here are leaving the community to find affordability elsewhere. What will you, as a member of council, do about this?
Well, I think a point of that question was missed. We're talking about residents who already live here, they're trying to stay here, they're trying to afford their houses that they're living in. Some people are getting taxed out, some people are on extremely budgeted incomes. And keeping some money aside is great, but you know, and building all this affordable housing is great too, but what happens to the citizens who actually live here that have houses or have homes that are still trying to afford to stay here? That's the real question, I believe. So, you know, maybe some type of tax credit for individuals who are elderly, you know, maybe using some of the money from the city to try and keep them in their homes. An idea I have is folks who, again, have been living here a long time and their houses are dilapidated, you know, what can the city do to help them get that house back up? And time's up.
All right, candidates. My next question, we'll start with you, Mr. Craig. What should the role of city council be in addressing homelessness and what specific actions would you support beyond what's already been done to help curb its rise?
I think we really need to lean on, I don't mean lean on, that's a horrible, horrible thing to say, because they've done so much, but the Good Shepherd House has done so much. There are a lot of nonprofits here that do things, but everybody's kind of in their own lane. Places like the Good Shepherd House, the Good Shepherd Ministries, they actually get people into homes or into somewhere they can actually live and call their own or call that space theirs. They could even, I think right now they're at 240 families is what they're handling, or 240 people, whereas pre-COVID, I think it was like 170. You know, the, I mean, the city does have a lot of compassion and care and a lot of folks have compassion and care, reaching out to our religious leaders, religious communities, trying to do anything and everything we can to help the homeless.
Thank you. And to you, Mr. Sappho, what should the role of city council be in addressing homelessness?
Well, the city council should play a role in it and has been playing a role in it. We invest over a million dollars a year in homeless services and working with our homeless providers. We have over 27 homeless providers in this community. We also rezoned for the Healing Place under withering opposition to that particular facility that helps a lot of people that are homeless. Let's not, you know, homelessness is people need homes. The city of Wilmington is the government that has supported Lakeside Reserve of 48 units with supportive services. And we're about to put 33 units of supportive housing with supportive services again on Carolina Beach Road. That's the way you fix homelessness. You have to get people units and you have to make the commitment to invest in them and not just talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you. And now to you, Mr. Barfield. What should the role of city council be in addressing homelessness?
One role it shouldn't be in is criminalizing being homeless. There's this thing called compassion in the fact that these are our neighbors. I'm proud that I led the county several years ago in providing social workers to work with our homeless population in downtown in particular. We provided what we call den bins where they can actually store their stuff in locked facilities so they can go out and look for work, get the resources that they need to get the help that they needed as well. Supportive building a healing place, a county facility that houses those that have substance uses orders, but also when we had terrible weather here, it opened up their doors for those folks that were homeless. When the pandemic took place, the county provided hotels for every person that was homeless to make sure they weren't spreading COVID-19 within those homeless encampments. You know, my phrase is that but for the grace of God, there go I. That could be Jonathan Barfield, Jr. walking those streets. There are so many people that are one paycheck away from being in that same position, so why do you criminalize something and cause people to have citations as opposed to opening up opportunities? As a county commissioner, I supported funding the Good Shepherd, other initiatives such as the Eden Village and others that we've supported to indeed help those folks that are out there on the streets.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Delaney Tarpley with WECT News. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you guys for sticking around, or if you're new, welcome. This question, we're going to start with Mr. Barfield. The character of Wilmington is changing as more houses and apartments are built on existing land. What should be the balance between green space and development and how can city council play a role in determining that?
You know, I've been a big proponent of parks in our community, you know, having grown up here, this is where I was raised. The county put a lot of money in the Longleaf Park and to our Northern Regional Park, opening up Hanover Pines Reserve, a new park down in the southern part of the county, expanding those opportunities, partnering with the city to take in Echo Farms and building a park there, going out to the northern part of the county and getting Olson Park as well. To me, it should be more invested in parks. I'm at Longleaf Park every day, walking three and a quarter miles. Most days I have my grandson with me. We walk those three and a quarter miles, then we walk over to the playground. He swings for 12 or 15 minutes, then we walk the playground itself. He's almost two years old. We're in the park every day. I love the green spaces that we have. When it comes to building here, there ought to be green space built into every community that's built in our community to let folks have that sense of place and peace. You find that when you're walking outside, it helps your mental health. That's one reason why I'm out there walking every day, is being around nature is something that's really good for the soul. So again, as a county commissioner, I support all those initiatives and I want to do more. And I've got some improvement ideas for the city's parks. As a grandparent of a two-year-old, finding ways to have playground equipment that works for little kids.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Craig, what should be the balance between green space and development and how can city council play a role in determining that?
Well, I think city council needs to definitely take a look and make sure that whatever zoning is there probably needs to be readdressed. Some of these high-density areas are causing a lot of problems with their infrastructure. That could be at the stormwater, electrical grid, or the roads itself. And I've really been thinking here lately about the environmental impact that has the, so the heat signature with places like that with all the parking, that causes an issue. When you're taking down trees, you're getting rid of a natural deterrent to flooding. You can put all the retention ponds you want, but they'll overflow too because that was what we saw in Florence. There were places in town that never flooded that flooded and vice versa. I believe the city really needs to pay attention with these builders and make sure that they adhere to the four corners of the contract of what they're going to do and not going to do.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Sappho, what should be the balance between green space and development and how can city council play a role in determining that?
Well, in almost every development in this community, a percentage of it has to be kept green space. The developer privately has to do that. If you look at the land use plan and read, if you want to read several hundred pages, go right ahead, but a percentage of that is protected for open space and green space. The other thing is the city has over 700 acres of park land, over 30-some parks. I am proud to say that we have partnered with the county on Echo Farms when Echo Farms was developed for a park, Olson Park, another 90 acres. The Bryant Track, which I believe that the city should partner with the county if possible, some 80 acres right there off of Independence Boulevard within the incorporated city limits, another good partnership that we can work out with this community, as well as the Encino Park that we did up on 421, although outside of the incorporated city limits, it plays an important role for soccer and sports complexes and stuff like that. We should also look for ways to put our walking trails around our parks like we did at Echo Farms. And the other thing I will say is 50% of the beach renourishment money comes from the city of Wilmington to help you nourish your beaches. Those beaches are also considered parkland, people where they can walk. We also make significant investments outside of the incorporated city limits for our communities. Thank you.
All right. This question will first go to Bill Sappho. The Endowment controls more than $1 billion of public money from the sale of NHRMC to Navon Health. How would you describe the job that the board is doing and how would you go about building a better relationship with that group?
Well, first of all, it's been rocky, to say the least. Obviously, that's a significant gift and asset for our community and they're going to play a very important role in helping a lot of nonprofits, helping people in public health, helping this community as a whole. And they have to spend that money into New Hanover County. You have to build relationships with people, you have to build relationships with the people on the endowment, and also understand how that endowment is going to work. What's the rules of engagement? How do we operate together? I believe personally that the endowment will look to partner with the city as well as the county. If we jointly do it together, they would be the third wheel of this particular stool or the third leg of that stool. And I think they play a very important role, but it's going to have to be city and county initiatives working together. That's why park space, open space is critically important to how we work together and work with the endowment to make it happen. And building that relationship with the endowment is extremely important.
Same question to Jonathan Barfield. How would you describe the job the board of the endowment is doing and how would you go about building a better relationship with that group?
I think I already have a relationship with folks that are there, being that I was one of those that helped establish the endowment. You know, the endowment for me is a game changer and it can be a game changer if they play their cards right. You know, I was thankful to see this last round of investment in our community, investing in our public schools, investing in nonprofits that are serving our youth. Those are things that are dear and dear to my heart. You know, I don't know that they can think big enough. When you think you're going to have 60 to 70, 80 million dollars a year coming in that you can invest in your community, many people have not seen that kind of money. I thought about Michael Jordan when he came and donated $10 million to build those two Michael Jordan clinics. What would it be like to be able to give $10 million away and not even think about it? You know, I don't know what that's like, but we have an endowment that has the ability to have that type of an effect on our community where we could change the outcomes of people's lives forever, ever, and ever if they work together and partner with these nonprofits. And I'm thankful to see that they're now investing more in the local nonprofits that are the engines of our community here.
Mr. Craig, how would you describe the job the board of the endowment is doing and how would you go about building a better relationship with that group?
Well, I believe the job that they were doing was extremely stressful and I don't think it was very productive for the first part. You know, I believe that they're supposed to spend 4% a year under their 501(c) or their umbrella, so was it 1.5 million? Is that about right? So was that $60 million? And I don't think they spent $60 million this year. If they don't spend the money next year, it bumps up to 5%. So that means you've got to spend more. And if they don't spend then, then what happens to that money? Are they going to lose their designation? Building relationships, built relationships with anybody and everybody. You know, I think we need to lean on it a little bit harder as the city, really sit down with them, say, well, what are you going to do for us? Because the city lies inside the county. I mean, we're here just like everybody else and we need their help.
Thank you.
Candidates, our last umbrella question is about public safety. The city has had some trouble hiring and retaining police officers and there's some debate over what style of policing WPD should follow. Mr. Craig, I'd like your answer first to the question. Now that there's a new police chief in place, what role do you think the mayor and city council should take to help improve the police department?
I don't think I have enough time for a minute.
You can try.
Yeah. I'm a retired cop. I'm retired from the city of Wilmington. I worked there for a long time. Most of my work was violent crimes from 2000 until I retired. I've already met the chief, he seems like a good guy. I've actually had contact with the former special agent in charge in Virginia, who knows him, and he gives him a thumbs up. I've fought with Ralph Evangelos, Ralph gives him a thumbs up. And so far, it's my meaning and what everybody else has said that they really like him. You need to let him do his job. The city needs to basically stay out of his way and let him come in and say, this is what we need to do. There's been, there was a lot of stress that was caused unfortunately by the last administration and caused a lot of good people to leave. And we're talking 10, 15-year veterans, homicide detectives that left to go work in Leland, let's say.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Sappho, there's a new police chief in place. What role do you think the mayor and city council should take to help improve the police department?
Well, first and foremost, I think Chief Zudimah exudes leadership and I believe that that department is going to have a good leader in charge. The other part of it is salaries. Obviously, in the last two budget cycles, we have supported giving police officers, as well as other city staff, additional monies for salary because we think that is very important to retain officers in our community. And obviously, the chief is going to come to us with a significant amount of things that they're going to need over time, radios, cars, you name it. And, you know, the city council is going to have to also appropriate funding to make certain that those officers have the necessary equipment to do the job. It's a tough job, 140-some thousand calls for service every single year, the busiest department in the city by far, and the number-one department in regards to expenditures of over 40-some million dollars. million dollars. It's a significant department, and I believe we've got a really good person in charge there. And I believe that we're going to get, we're going to make sure that we're going to get that staffing up to where it needs to be and where there'd be with added bonuses and additional salary.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barfield, there's a new police chief in place. What role do you think the mayor and council should take to help improve the police department? 60 seconds, sir.
For me, the council actually sets the tone for the culture. The council is the ultimate leader of the organization because they hire the police chief. You have to take care of your people. Often saying that I can show you where your heart is if you show me your checkbook register, because we spend money on what we value. And what we don't value right now is our police department because they're not paying them enough. When you see a department that is 80 billets low, that means you're not investing in what you should be investing in. As a county commissioner, we increased the pay for our first responders, our sheriff's department, time and time and time again, to make sure that they felt the love from the county, number one, felt appreciated, number two, and felt valued by the citizens in our community. You have to take care of your people. The people are the engine behind law enforcement, behind the whole perception of public safety. And if you don't feel the love, you're not going to do your job well. You look at what's happening right now with TSA, folks that are calling out. You're seeing some of the same phenomena right now with our police department, that's folks are not feeling the love from the city. We need to pay those folks, do a pay study, and then not just go at the average, but go above that to make sure they are having jobs where they can live in this community. As a Realtor, I see more police cars in Brotherstown because they can't afford to live here because of their pay.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next round will be from our reporters. You'll have 90 seconds for each response. These are questions that were sent in by our viewers, listeners, and readers, and we're going to start with Kelly Canoyer.
This first question is for Jonathan Barfield. The Wilmington area is consistently ranked as one of the most dangerous to bike and walk in. A pedestrian named Mark Emery was just struck and killed this past weekend. Yet, infrastructure improvements to protect vulnerable road users aren't a high priority for the city. What do you think city council should do to protect pedestrians and cyclists?
I think an enhanced campaign on public safety when it comes to bikers, number one. I know we have this Be a Looker campaign with Wilmington MPO, and we have billboards to talk about Be a Looker. But the citizens here need to wake up and recognize that people are biking every day. I bike often. I live right where the Cross City Trail begins, and I ride my bike on the Cross City Trail quite often. And as I cross College Road, you have folks that aren't paying attention at those crosswalks there. And I saw a gentleman almost get hit the other day. We can have all the bike lanes you want in your community, but if the public is not paying attention, you're going to see people get hit over and over and over again. So we have to educate the public on bicycle safety, number one, encourage folks to use these trails. I used to take my bike, as I do have a rack on the back of my vehicle as well, to the park, but it's too cumbersome there. So I ride in my neighborhood. I feel safe in my neighborhood. I ride about seven miles a day with my grandson on the front of my bike. Me and this guy, we hang out a good bit. So I'm definitely into biking and those kind of things.
Thank you.
This question is for Mr. Craig from one of our viewers. The city owns a good deal of vacant properties. Why not have a designated campground for unhoused folks to be permitted in if we are making normal public spaces unavailable to them? That's from one of our viewers.
I don't think a tent city would really be the answer, though. I mean, is it a good temporary thing? Possibly. But you want to help those folks get back to where, you know, where they feel safe, where they came from. I don't mean, I'm not meaning like kicking people out of town, but people show up here and they're originally from Arizona. It's like, okay, how can we help you get back to Arizona? Not that we're going to hand you a ticket, but how can we help you get back there? How can we help you establish contact with family and friends so you're back with a positive, you know, support structure? The only concern, I mean, I have several concerns about, you know, doing something like that. One, you know, who's going to watch it? I mean, you have all those kinds of things to think about. You know, we've had situations where some of the homeless camps caught on fire because they don't know, or they didn't pay attention to simple fire safety. I mean, as a Boy Scout, I remember you always build a fire this big and made eight feet out to make sure nothing else caught on fire. But it just doesn't seem to happen that way. I'd really like to look more into that, though, and study it to find out what may be the pros and cons of that.
Thank you.
My question is for you, Mr. Saffo. Where do you see our infrastructure in 20 years, and how do you plan to move it there?
Well, I see the infrastructure obviously improving and being extended over time. Obviously, water and sewer is a very important part of it, which Cape Fear Public Utility extends that based on what the board decides, and the improvements to those particular facilities. Roadway improvements in this city, in this community, in this region will continue to grow. The state's going to have to figure another way to give funding or to allow cities and counties to fund roads and bridges. We can't wait 10, 15, 20 years for interchanges anymore in roads. With the amount of population growth that is moving into this, not only city, but to this state, being the third fastest-growing state in the country, we need more resources from the state. Remember, the state of North Carolina owns all the major roadways in the city of Wilmington, and they have a responsibility to also help improve upon those roadways. And you can't do it on the gas tax anymore. You're going to have to find other methods and other means to be able to fund these transportation initiatives, which is a lot what people are talking about these days.
Thank you.
This is Straight Back to You, Mr. Mayor. You voted in favor of the recent homelessness ordinance championed by Luke Waddell. It was contentious, so can you explain your vote?
Yes. When the vote first came up several, I guess, two months ago, we decided, we had a lot more discussion to make on it. We sat down, met with a lot of the homeless providers. We came back. I think we worked on a pretty significant policy that I think is fair and equitable, is done in a bipartisan fashion. First of all, we did not criminalize it. A misdemeanor, class three, and an infraction, look at it on your phones, see the difference between the two of them. We decriminalized it. You can't get, it doesn't go against your record, and if you get a fine and you don't pay it, you're not going to jail. Okay? First and foremost. Number two, we went, said, we're going to go with social workers. We're going to go, we're going to approach people that are homeless, not with police officers, but with social workers, because we thought that was important. We're already advertising for those social workers that it costs about a half a million dollars. And then I also said that if we had any available property that we could give to a nonprofit for low-barrier shelter, we should do it and work with the nonprofit, but also understand that wherever this shelter is going to be put, that we also have to work with the neighborhood that might have impacts because of it. So I thought it was a fair and good policy. I know it was contentious, but at the same time, you have to be humane to the people that are out there on the street, first and foremost, no doubt about it. But you also have to also address the issues that a lot of our citizens have been calling us about. One of the things that has not been reported is the over 1,900 calls for services of citizens that are calling us, saying, please help us with some of these initiatives. We need to give more money to nonprofits. They need more beds. They need more resources, and we're going to do that.
Thank you.
This next question is for Mr. Barfield. As a county commissioner for several years, you sat on a board of five, but as mayor, you would be leading a council of seven and at the same time representing a smaller population. How will this impact your decision-making and also the process of your decision-making?
I don't think the process will change at all. You know, in my 16 years as the county commissioner, my first six years, I was the only Democrat on the board, but I served as chair twice and vice chair twice. Having the ability to work across party lines, it's all about relationships, really. You know, as you work with each other, you get to know that we're really no different at the end of the day. So finding those commonalities and building upon those things. I think I know everyone that's on council now. I've had relationships with those folks for quite a long time. Again, having served in county government for 16 years, you build relationships, and you know who people are, and people know who you are as well. At the end of the day, I'm a people person. I've taken so many leadership development courses over my time. I have the ability to do just that.
Okay, thank you.
And to you, Mr. Craig. You told Port City Daily you believe in a win-win situation when it comes to balancing housing supply, affordability, and residents' desire to often keep density low. What does that look like to you?
It falls back to partnerships, especially with builders. You know, whatever we can get, the percentage-wise, and like bumping the percentage up to help house individuals would be great. You know, everything you do, everything's a compromise, and that's what we really have to work on is compromise. We have to sit down, look across the table from each other without egos, without our, you know, our own idea of how things are done, pay attention to what the other person's saying, and work out a plan and stick to that plan. Because every now and then, I don't know if I've noticed, but it seems like plans get made and they just get changed so much, which causes other issues.
Thank you. All right, for round three, we're going to start with you again, Billy Craig. This is from a Port City Daily reader. How would you respond to the federal government mobilizing the National Guard or military without the governor's request in the city of Wilmington?
That's come up several times. All right. So here, I'm trying to just make a real short story here. If a department does not follow a lawful order, that department, no matter if they're city or county, have now put themselves in jeopardy of losing funding, of losing employees because now you have dereliction of duty, and you're looking at civil and criminal penalties. That's one. The other thing is, you know, you're not going to know if it happens. There's going to be a situation where they just show up. I keep hearing, it's like, well, the governor's going to know if it gets mobilized. More than likely, they're not going to know until it shows up. If an officer or a deputy sheriff does not follow the law, and that is driving down the road, you stop somebody, and they got a federal detainer on them, if they do not follow the law, the law says you shall arrest. Not you can arrest or you may arrest, as you shall arrest. So they need to follow a lawful order. They need to follow the law. If something ends up becoming illegal or something is defined as unconstitutional, I'll be the first one to stand up and say, this is wrong. I've sworn an oath my entire life to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the same in North Carolina. And I had to do it every two years when I was assigned and sworn as a federal marshal for the last 15 years of my career, working counterterrorism. So, yeah, I'll be the first one to protect your rights. But if you do wrong, I'll be the first one to tell you wrong, and you got to go.
Thank you.
Okay, this question's for Bill Saffo. On your campaign website, you mentioned wanting to preserve the city's tree canopy, and in a recent forum, you spoke about wanting to strengthen the city's tree ordinance. What specifically would you like to implement to achieve these goals?
Well, we did strengthen the tree ordinance. We reduced the number of caliper, the size of the caliper, the tree that you can cut down. If you cut down a four-inch tree, you're going to have to replace it one for one. If you cut down a six-inch tree, you're going to have to replace it two to one. We've also put significant fines to date. I think the city has almost $2 million in tree mitigation fines from folks that have cut down trees. Last night, we spent $577,000 for 641 new trees to be planted. I personally feel that if elected, I would love to revisit the tree ordinance, working with the Alliance for Cape Fear Trees, working with our Tree Commission, working with citizens, because it seems like nobody likes it. And we've gone through two reditions of this particular ordinance, and I think it just needs to be revisited. I believe that we should have some percentage of the lot that is protected no matter what. And I think because the fines are definitely not stopping somebody from cutting down trees, they would rather pay the fine than save the tree. And of course, there's a lot of issues that go into that in respect to stormwater things, utilities you have to put in. It affects how trees are protected and how development is done, and working with the state legislature, because a lot of people don't realize, state legislature plays also a significant role on wherever significant improvements are going to be made, where the roads are going to be, where the lots are going to be, where the house is going to be built, driveways. Those builders and developers can take down those trees without having to pay a fine. That's a state statute and a state law. But I think we do need to revisit the tree ordinance in this community for certain.
Thank you.
And to you, Mr. Barfield. This is from a constituent downtown. They say, one of the problems I face is a lack of mixed-use spread throughout neighborhoods. Most commercial is focused on UMX collector corridors or in the CBD. Would you support a reworking of the comprehensive plans to allow more neighborhood commercial closer to residential areas to promote walkability and neighborhood cohesion?
You know, that's something that has to happen. When you go to your Charlotte's and your Raleigh's, you see your grocery stores intermixed with your regular homes downtown, whether it be in an apartment complex with a hair seater right there on the bottom floor and apartments above. You know, finding ways to intertwine those things, bring services closer to people, that's something that's very important. Having a downtown pharmacy is definitely important. You know, having closer access to healthcare is definitely important downtown. All those things, I think, are important. You know, just having a Dollar General on Water Street, to me, is not enough. Looking at the number of rooftops that have taken place downtown over the last several years, I'm happy to see them, and I know folks who desperately wanted to have a grocery store downtown. Where I live, I can walk less than half a mile to an Aldi, right across the street to a food line, a little further down, less than a mile to a Publix. You know, those same facilities, as well as fast-food restaurants, those same things should be in close proximity to every neighborhood so that folks are not getting in their car so much, but have access to those things. And those are men that need to make their community better for them.
Thank you.
That's going to end the line of questioning from our reporters. We're going to give each one of the candidates 90 seconds for a closing statement. Since we run in alphabetical order for the opening statement, we'll go reverse alphabetical order for the closing statement. Maybe if you'd like to touch on an issue that we haven't talked about this evening, feel free. You have 90 seconds for a closing statement. We'll begin with candidate Bill Saffo. Mr. Saffo, 90 seconds, sir.
I have been your mayor for quite some time, and I'm proud of the achievements that we have all done together. I believe in we, not me. And I believe that the only way you're going to get things done in this community is by working together. We've built a tremendous community here and a tremendous city. It didn't come about by accident. It was a lot of people working together over many years, creating plans that the city council, as well as the county commissioners, have implemented over time to make this one of the great cities. I believe in America. And obviously, I always judge a community by, are more people wanting to move here than move out? And I believe the question of that is, heck, yeah. I will also say that I am very proud of what we were able to do with River Place and the old parking deck here, and converting it into a mixed-use concept that I think everybody loves. I believe that we were talking about a convention center for 80-some years, and we got it done. When people said it couldn't be done, and now we have to double the size of it. We finished our river walk that nobody thought could ever be done and finished. Cross City Trail, $20 million in this last phase of the 2014 transportation bond that is about in its final stages. I'm very proud of it. The Third Street redo, more jobs that have been created than any time in the history of this community. Just a huge announcement with Amazon. Over 2,000 jobs, not one dime of incentive. We saved the film industry that when the state legislature took away the credits in 2010, we went back and worked very hard to protect that. I have been very proud of what we've been able to do as a community, working with the EPA, working with the Biden administration, and putting in the regulations for that. So thank you for your time. I ask you for your support. I hope I've demonstrated that I've been a great mayor and a good mayor for this community.
Thank you, sir. Next for his closing statement, 90 seconds, we will go to Mayor candidate Billy Craig. Mr. Craig, 90 seconds, sir.
Several years ago, the city had an opportunity to handle pay compression for city employees. I think the number was $2.5 million would have solved the problem. When I got hired in 1995, guess what the complaint was? Pay compression. Guess what it is now? Pay compression. So we got to work on that. It seems like, you know, people hear what you say, but they don't listen. The Cross City Trail, it is really nice. However, it's being utilized by e-bikes, and calls for service have gone up for people getting, you know, hurt or in wrecks on those e-bikes on the Cross City Trail. The other day, I was putting out signs on Eastwood Road, and I watched a young man get hit by a car because he was on his e-bike and, you know, went through, went across, got hit by a truck, and, you know, you had blood coming out of his ear, and, you know, so just did what I could until EMS got there. The interesting thing about that, because that's, that would be considered a wreck with injuries, it took the PD almost 35 minutes to get there to cover the call. You know, I've always been told, don't ever say you're not a politician, especially when you're trying to be one. I'm not a politician. I'll shoot it to you straight. I believe there needs to be true transparency within this government because there has been some stuff that has not been transparent and has caused a lot of issues. I believe in getting that, setting that straight and getting this city straight and helping everybody we can.
Thank you, sir. Next for his closing statement, 90 seconds, Mayor candidate Jonathan Barfield. Mr. Barfield, 90 seconds, sir.
My favorite author John Maxwell says the best, that everything rises and falls on leadership. My slogan is simple: proven, trusted leadership. Serving as a county commissioner for 16 years, I've been a part of the most powerful governing body at the local level, with the city of Wilmington being the largest city that I represented over those 16 years. When I looked at downtown, my fingerprints are all over downtown Wilmington. It started with when we passed a 2008 bond for the Cape Fear Community College and built Union Station. The county funded the building of Union Station. It started when we redeveloped 320 Chester Street, gutted it out, and brought it back. It started when we redeveloped 320 Chester Street, gutted it out and brought it back for our county administration building. Then we tore down the Juvenile Justice Building and built another. My name is on that building. When you go down to the Wilson Center, the county funded the building of the Wilson Center, my name is on that building. We helped the Cape Fear Community College purchase the old Bank of America building for their allied health program. And then the criminal, the crim, the top of the heap, so to speak, is Project Grace. Something that I supported from day one. We had the grand opening the other day. Looking at all the things I've been a part of in downtown Wilmington, I'm proud of this community that I call home. You know, having followed, again, my father's footsteps, serving as a county commissioner, public services in my family's blood, my sister serving in the Navy, my uncle serving in the Navy, in the Air Force is a part of what we do.